All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to the City Council chambers. In attendance to my left, I have Chairman Ed Reisinger. To his left, I have Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. I have Leon Pickett from the 7th District. Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. And to my...
Eric was here.
Eric is somewhere here, from the 11th District. And I have Jennifer, who is helping me out as well, who's in charge of this committee. From the President's office, we have Rebecca Simmons. And from the Mayor's office, we have Matty Stigman. Perfect. Afternoon. The Land Use Committee will hear Bill 19-0413, the Plant Unit Development Amendment 2, Whitehall Cotton Mill, for the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Whitehall Cotton Mill Plant Unit Development and providing for an special effective date. This bill was originally introduced on July 22nd. It was sponsored by Councilmember Leon Pickett. Any comments from the sponsor, Councilman? Nope? Okay, we'll keep rolling. Agency reports, I'll just go down the list.
Which one are we on?
We're... Okay. I'm going to start with the Planning Department.
Good afternoon. Eric Tiso for Planning. This bill was presented to the Planning Commission in their meeting of August 22nd. And the purpose of this is to amend the plant unit development. It fundamentally does three things. Number one, it adds outdoor table service, which is now known as outdoor dining in the current zoning code. That use was added to the IMU 1 zoning district through a comprehensive zoning code update. And the transition rules provide that anything that is allowed in the underlying zoning is automatically incorporated into the plant unit development. And so, this is automatically inherited. So while we're in here, we can make that amendment, just for clarity, so it's more easily found. Secondly, banquet halls are similarly allowed in the underlying IMU 1 zoning district, but by conditional use, requiring approval through the Mayor and City Council by ordinance. So that is automatically adopted as well. And so, it's being added here as a one and done, instead of needing it to be done multiple times, as the use may change from time to time. Finally, the real reason why this was started was to amend the type and number of liquor licenses allowed within the plant unit development, to meet the evolving change of the tenants within the building. And of course, separate approvals for each of those liquor licenses will be needed from the Liquor Board. For these changes, we recommend approval.
All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'm just a banquet hall maven.
Yes.
So let me just mave for a minute. All of the requirements that go with banquet halls are included in the adoption of a banquet hall in this area, correct?
For the use requirements, yes, it travels with it.
And you have to have an owner rep on site and all those kinds of things?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. No questions from my colleagues? Department of Transportation?
Madam Chair, the Department of Transportation stands by its report as no objection.
Perfect. BMZA?
The BMZA stands by its report as favorable.
Law Department?
Law Department stands by its report and plans to approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Housing Department?
DHCD stands by our report, no objections.
Brilliant. Excellent.
BDC?
We stand by our report. Favorable?
Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Are you on behalf of the Fire Department?
The Fire Department stands by its report.
Department of Public Works?
I'm just standing up here, because I don't have a microphone. We stand by our report. We have no objection. We just noted that current parking provisions, we want to make sure that they support this change in use. And any increased impervious area could stimulate a stormwater management review. I don't believe there's anything that's happening to change that impervious area's surface for this, but we just wanted to add that as a note, in addition to making sure that current parking could support this use.
Finance?
Department of Finance stands by our report.
Perfect. We'll now take public testimony. Does anybody want to speak out? The first person is Caroline Hecker.
Good afternoon. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. I just want to add a couple of things. One is, in response to Councilmember Clark's comment about the banquet halls, we have met with the Hampden Community Council. They requested that we include a series of amendments related to the banquet hall limiting its size, requiring parking. We are happy to include those amendments. They were vetted by the Planning Commission at the Planning Commission hearing. And just for clarity's sake, we want to make sure that the amendments are adopted by the committee as part of this hearing today, so they can be included in the bill. I have copies, if you don't have copies up there, I'm not sure.
They're in our packet.
I just want to make sure that they are part of the record. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the product, the project.
Any questions from...
Can I... It's not... I know it's not my district, but banquet halls, I just... Yeah, that's... There they are. And then they've added other things?
They... I believe they look like they're in your packet there. Those were made at the request of the Hampden Community Council.
And Mr. Segman can probably address that as well.
As the immediate past president of the Hampden Community Council, I can just verify what Ms. Hecker is saying.
Thank you.
And I... But I always believe every word she says.
Thank you.
I don't always like every word she says.
And on that note, thank you all.
Madam Chair, may I just say something?
Yes.
So I just wanted to thank the owner and his team for being responsive to the community. And I believe the amendment reflects true community participation and the desires that the community had as it relates to introducing this use to this property. So thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Collins? Maria Collins?
Marsha.
Oh, got it. Okay. And so, we'll go... We have some amendments to consider for this bill. Is there a motion to move the amendment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Perfect. So Mary Pat moved it. Second by Councilman Pickett. Yep. All those... No. No finding of facts. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm just going to go down the list. Chairman Reisinger?
Yes.
Snead, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Casello?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton? Oh, she's absent. Pickett?
Yes.
And Stokes is absent. These amendments have been approved. The bill is now ready for a final vote.
Move the bill as approved? I mean, as amended?
Amendments, yeah.
Second.
Oh. And Leon seconded it. So here we go again. For Chairman Ed Reisinger?
Yes.
Snead, Shannon, yes. Mary Pat Clark?
Yes.
Erica Sello?
Yes.
Ryan Dorsey?
Yes.
And Sharon's absent. Councilman Pickett?
Yes.
Yes. And Robert Stokes is... Okay. All right, this moves to...
Second reading.
This... The committee will present this bill to the full council for a second reading on October 28th. And so, it's passed. And so, the next bill we'll go to is 19-0430. And so, this bill is to repeal of the ordinance of 16-580 Northwood Commons Plant Unit Development for the purpose of repealing ordinance 16-580, which designated certain properties as a business plant unit development, known as Northwood Commons, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on August 19, 2019. It was sponsored by Councilman Ryan Dorsey. Any comments, Councilman?
Yes, Chairman Snead, appreciate it. Thank you. Just a little... I'd like to give the committee a little background on the bill and the site. I've been directly engaged with the surrounding communities, the Hill and Road Improvement Association, original Northwood, Stonewood, Pentwood, Winston, and New Northwood, for, I guess, four years now, since 2015, regarding the future of this site, as well as working directly with the owner and their representative and the developer of the site, MLR Partners, Mark Rembaum, David Bramble, and the Schuster family, and their representative Caroline Hecker, who's here. Countless meetings. And a lot of concerns raised and hashed out, worked out. Variety of different concerns. There have been, you know, proposals to have housing on the site and then to not have housing on the site, to have student housing or market rate housing, non-student housing, multi-story, single-story. There have been some really, I think, good outcomes to some of the things that we've discussed. For instance, underneath what will become the Barnes and Noble, there was originally slated to just basically be a cold, empty shell that was just a wall that was going to serve no purpose, when I figured you could actually add another business underneath that. And proposed that to the developer and that now, I believe, is planned to become an actual shell where a building, where another business can go, or some other useful purpose can take place. So there's a lot that's happened over this. At a certain point, and also, you know, the council has approved state RISE Zone tax credit for this site in order to help with the financing for the site. And at a certain point, the... It became clear that this site was going to only be a single-story development, whereas at the time when this PUD was put in, it included renderings of a concept that was multiple stories high. And that's critical as to why this repeal is necessary. The history on the site is that my predecessor wanted to help the site to be able to relocate a McDonald's from where it sits in the middle of the parking lot right now, out to the grass along Lockraven Boulevard. And that grass was zoned as open space at the time, which would not allow for that McDonald's to be located there. And so, this PUD was created in order to allow that McDonald's to relocate there. In the process of submitting the PUD, these renderings that at that time showed a multi-story development with multiple stories of housing above it, were included with that PUD's submission. Later on, during transform, those grass spaces that were zoned open space were changed with a map amendment to be able to allow the McDonald's to go there by right under the underlying zoning, so that the PUD would no longer be necessary. Everything now that is intended to happen at this site can happen without the PUD, except because the plan has now changed from being a multi-story development with multiple stories of housing on it, to eliminate that housing constitutes a major change to the... Under the PUD, which would require the PUD to be amended by ordinance, it can't be simply done administratively. It's too significant a change in the amount of housing. And because everything that is intended to happen here can be done under the underlying zoning, there is no need to amend the PUD when, in fact, repealing it, which I believe is the preferred path forward from the Planning Department, to repeal PUDs wherever possible, is the more prudent path forward. And so, I put forth this bill to repeal the PUD. And that's it. I hope you'll all support this bill today.
Okay. I'm going to start with Planning.
Good afternoon again, Eric Tiso. That was basically what I was about to tell you. Thank you for that. So I'll just fast forward to the part where in Title 13, Section 205 to double I. Among the reasons that you can repeal a PUD is this one, where it is no longer necessary in light of the property's underlying zoning. So since the underlying zoning provides for whatever the shopping center future needs may be, this PUD is no longer necessary and may be repealed.
All right. Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Department of Transportation?
Madam Chair, the Department of Transportation stands by its report and deferring to the Baltimore City Planning Department.
BMZA?
BMZA stands by its report as favorable.
Law Department?
Law Department approves the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Department of Housing?
DHCD stands by our report, no objections.
BDC?
Madam Chair, the BDC stands by its report. The BDC supports the passage of this bill.
Parking Authority?
Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
On behalf of the Fire Department?
Yep. Fire Department stands by its report.
Public Works?
We stand by our report. No objection to the passage of the bill. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, agencies. We're going to now move to public testimony. And we have the first person that signed up is Edward Smith.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson, members of City Council. My name is Edward Smith, and I'm a civil rights pioneer. In 1963, when Northwood was first integrated by students at Morgan State College, then, now Morgan State University, 341 of us went to jail in order to integrate that community and to integrate Northwood. I'm here to oppose this bill. It's not being in the spirit of what the community needs, and we ask that you continue with the PUD. Let me just give you a little bit of background, if I may, and I'm not going to stay long. But I think it is incumbent upon me to recognize that two great Baltimoreans have passed away, and I would be remiss, as a civil rights pioneer, if I did not recognize Elijah Cummings as one and Tommy DeLisandro as the other. And we are here to recognize them for the great public servants and people who believed in the community and what it should bring. Both men were giants in this community, and I thank God for the opportunity. I guess I'm not supposed to say that now, based on the Fourth Circuit, but I thank you. The Fourth Circuit said that in any government meeting, that we're not to say anything about God. It happened about a month ago, so I do apologize. But both of these men and their spirits still live on to this day. Elijah Cummings was my partner, my law partner, for many years. And Tommy DeLisandro, when I came to Baltimore, was the first mayor that I knew, and he was a man of uncommon, uncommon character. Let me say this to you. Morgan State University has existed out in Lauraville since 1917. We were not wanted by that community, which was then Baltimore County, in 1917. And in fact, they did everything that they could do to prevent us from coming to Lauraville. It was annexed by the city, I believe, in 1919. It was annexed, and it became part of Baltimore City when we had the votes back in the time when we had a little power. That shopping center was built in the 1950s, and it was probably obsolete at the time it was built. Morgan students were not allowed to go to any of the stores in that shopping center. And it was during a time when that Tommy DeLisandro and others who came after him fought in order to get those people in the community. Lauraville was, at the time, was 92% Caucasian. That community now, that the councilman has provided this bill for, is now 84% African-American. I say that because there seems to be a quantum change whenever a community changes over as to what people believe that it is entitled to. The PUD that originally was in force, and is still in force, had student housing for Morgan students. And as you know, some of our students have died as a result of being off-campus. Morgan borrowed $25 million from the HBC Youth Fund in Washington, DC, to build a public safety building right adjacent to that property. And they did it because student housing was needed for Morgan students. We have a deficit of about 450 beds that we don't have for freshmen who come to our campus. I graduated from Morgan in 1971, and I was student government president at Morgan during that time. And since that time, I have been in this community, and I see people like Mary Pat Clark, who I have had many contacts with, Ed Reisinger, and we have been in the trenches, so to speak, over the years. And Ed reminded me that we were old enough, probably, to remember the Great Fire in 1906, but I assured him that I wasn't around during that time. Mary Pat Clark, she was just a baby.
Just a baby.
Oh, he was definitely here.
You could bring us up.
But basically, let me say this to you. Without some real strictures on these folks who are the developers and owners, I don't know what's going to be in that neighborhood. And let me tell you this. You've given them an $8 million boondoggle with that RISE business, and I'm wondering about that. It's $4 million after five years, and then it can be increased to another $4 million. The government gave them $2 million. State government gave them $2 million of a $50 million project. What are we doing? There are three schools in the councilman's district right now that don't have air conditioners, don't even have fans in them. And why are we giving them $8 million of the taxpayers' money? And what are they doing with it? What will they do? Moving a McDonald's. Those people in Northwood need a shopping market. They need a drugstore. They don't need it to be placed over. And if you saw the article in the Sun paper, what they say, "Oh, well, we'll do it in the second phase." They need it now. And I made the point as to when communities change, sometimes we don't think that they're entitled to much. This morning, I went on YouTube and watched the councilman's election circuit when he was running for city council, the position that he is in now. And one of the things that he said on that YouTube presentation was that he wants to make sure that there's equity for every community in his district. Well, people believe them because he's sitting there right now. I remember him when I came to the groundbreaking ceremony at Northwood. Roseman Smith, who is with me now, and one of his constituents, Rain Prior, who sits back there with me, backing me up, heard that this was not something that should be done. Rose went to jail and spent three nights in jail with all of us there at that time. The community needs more than this PUD. And we need to make sure that the money that is being spent from the city coffers is money that will give the community what they want. A McDonald's is not it. There's too much sodium in the food, anyway. There should be a market there. There should be a drugstore there. And what they want to do is to make money, and that's fine, but don't make it on the bodies of others. I've heard the... I've heard from the departments of the city, and as most of you know, I used to be the liquor commissioner in Baltimore City. So I've heard these reports before, and it's pretty much pro-pharma. And when I hear them, I often wonder, do they take into consideration that they're real people who they're talking about when they make these grandiose kind of rubber stamps? They're real people who live up there, who cannot go to a drugstore. The first market is 2.4 miles from that area. Well, it's a question that we civil rights pioneers from that era have already answered to ourselves, and that's why they sent me here. I would ask that the City Council look at this very carefully, as to what we're giving up and what we're getting, and that you do not repeal this PUD. If it stays in effect and they lose, well, maybe we'll get somebody who'll be a little more conscientious about what they do. Doesn't make any sense to have a November groundbreaking and sit here in this month, almost in November of 2019, and why didn't they know what they were going to do before? Why did they wait for now? Opportunity, not community, is what's here. Madam Chairman, thank you for hearing me. Members of the City Council, old friends and new, I thank you.
Thank you, alum.
Oh, may I file a opposition?
Yes, we'll take your testimony.
And also, thank you. And my report to the pioneers at Morgan State University. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ms. Hecker.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Sir, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer your questions, sir.
I'm curious to know, with the possible repealing of the PUD, does that preclude or prevent, you know, grocery store or pharmacy from being a part of the development project?
It should not, but if you read the newspaper, there was an op-ed piece in the newspaper by a reporter, and the person who was interviewed from the company said that it would be in the second phase of the project sometime, I believe, in 2024. It does not preclude it, and you're absolutely right. The problem is, is that without student housing, Morgan is stuck with a $13 million building on that property with nothing to guard. As you know, Northeastern Police Station is only 400 yards from the shopping center itself, the largest police district, I believe, in this city. Why in the world would we spend $13 million for a public safety building with officers, 40 officers in it, if it was not to provide support for our students who were supposed to be on that loft over at Northwood Commons? It's a boondoggle. And I know that is an old phrase from the Civil War, so I might be showing my age, Mary Pat. But you don't remember that.
On all age and things.
It's a boondoggle. And what it does is it puts the state in a bad position, it puts Morgan in a bad position, and what we're actually doing is we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. And these people know it. They know it.
Can I just say, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I represent south of... Argon Drive is the southern boundary of this shopping center, and so I don't represent any of it, except I represent the neighbors that are to the south of Argon.
Right.
So I've been involved with this whole shopping center thing for a long, long time. And, you know, it's really... And, you know, it's really, everybody in this, I, no, let me back up. It was Joan Carter Conway, Senator, who I strongly have always supported and always will, who I think had a lot to do with that student housing component to begin with, and was just about battered to death about, from the surrounding neighborhoods, about the housing being included in that shopping center.
Just one. The other two were, and they were affirmative on the housing. And I know, right, I know because two years ago, I called Joan to try to mediate the situation, three years ago, when I was still practicing law, and didn't hear from her. Then I read in the newspaper that they had decided to take the housing out. And I thought it was odd then, and I think it's odd now that that occurred, but I never asked Joan about it. And as I said, I went to the phony baloney groundbreaking ceremony, and there they all were, kumbaya.
I got you, but I guess what I'm saying is, it was a, I was working with her, not employed, but as a friend, as a colleague, around that time. So I know that there were a lot of opponents. I represent part of the Hill and Road Improvement Association, and of original, part of original Northwood. So I was in the area for...
Like you always are, Mary Pat, you're on the, on the job.
Yeah, and so I guess what I'm just saying, in all due respect, is that, that housing got, that went through a political process in those neighborhoods, and basically, the neighbors didn't want any neighbors, whether they were Morgan students or whether they were market-free housing, they didn't want housing there. And ultimately, Senator Joan Carter Conway felt that she had to give it up because it was such an obstacle to getting everything else done. So now, all I'm saying is, right or wrong, that happened before now, and before this term of office. And that's what we were left with now. I mean, I was there, but Councilman Dorsey wasn't for when all that happened.
And I was there as well, because I've always been out at Morgan since.
Except that I was in the meetings.
Well, I'm just saying that it's, it's now sort of maybe sad news, but old news, that that component of this development is missing. I think what you're talking about is the kind of conveniences the neighborhood needs. I mean, I was also around when they did, when we did the plan, which did have housing, through, you know, community get-togethers, et cetera. And I know that the, the surrounding neighborhoods had, in those days, and it wasn't that long ago, had better demographics financially than around Belvedere Square.
Absolutely.
And so there's no reason that you would think grocery stores and pharmacies wouldn't go there because they're, they're up there around Belvedere.
But Mary Pat, there's one reason why there was the argument, and people put up their houses for sale, if you'll look around there and see whether or not those sales were made. These were students who looked like me, who would be over adjacent to their neighborhood. I don't know if those arguments were made when the city councilman was there, but they were certainly ones that were in our minds as civil rights pioneers.
I got you. And fair enough. I'm just saying that here we are today, and basically, we're not, we can't go through the housing or no housing all over again, and we don't have someone with, well, we don't have anyone that could pull it off the way perhaps the Senator could have. But we could, I believe sincerely that we're trying to get a grocery store, I hadn't heard about pharmacy, but a grocery store with one, to go there. And as far as I've heard, and everybody asks about it every time we have a meeting, the developers haven't been able to get one. And I don't know why, because the demographics would say it's a perfect location.
But, Miss, can I just?
So I just wanted to say, with all due respect, and I mean that, and all the history, we are where we are now, and this is what it is, and we need a grocery store with a pharmacy. But so far, we got to find one that'll come, and I don't know why they won't.
Point well taken, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I, so that's a problem all over the city that we have with getting groceries in Baltimore City. Even in an area where I am, in the EBDI footprint, years after years, we have not been able to secure a grocery store in that footprint. And it's traffic there during the day, I mean, you would think it's people there in the evening as well that live in the surrounding community. I mean, BDC is here, they can speak to that, I'm pretty sure, in reference to getting supermarkets in Baltimore City. But have you had a conversation? Have you reached out to the president of the university? Have you reached out to the developers to talk?
When we picketed the...
But no, have you sat down for a conversation?
Oh, I have tried. If you'll look at my notes, you'll see in my report to the full body of the civil rights pioneers, I have tried to reach his person who is in charge, his chief of staff, Dr. Veal, and I was told to speak with Dr. Wilson. But when you are among the loyal opposition, sometimes backs are turned and ears are plugged so that you cannot hear and you will not see.
Well, thank, thank you. I thank you for being honest, then.
Yes, I, I think I try to be.
Did you ever, can I ask one little off-the-wall historic question?
Sure.
Yes.
Did they ever get all those names on the bridge that did picket?
No, they can't do it. The epoxy will not stick.
No.
No, the epoxy will not stick to that bridge. If you'll go by, you'll see that some of the, some of the bridge work has come off already. Putting names on it will not work. What I suggested was that they put it on the grassy knoll outside of the Jenkins Building. There's a grassy knoll that goes up to the shopping center, and a marquee there would probably be, but of course, once again, when you cannot get people sometimes to talk to you honestly, then it becomes a problem.
I'd be glad to talk about that.
Let's get the next.
Madam Chair.
Caroline.
May I?
Yeah, while you're, while she's coming up, unless you have a question directly for...
No, just a comment and response, certainly not a question. I have been vocally opinionated about this site for years. I think that anybody that had any such strong feelings, many of which I have, all of which I have shared myself very publicly, to the exact same sentiments. Anybody who wanted to echo the things that I have said for years had a lot of opportunity to reach out to me. But because circumstances are what they are, and the community has had extensive, extensive engagement with the developer, and in fact, reached a memorandum of understanding about it, which is a signed contract between the community, multiple community organizations, including the Hill and Road Improvement Association, I believe half of the board members whom are Morgan alums. And, and, and the developer, they made a decision that the market circumstances being what they are, and the developer being who they are, the likelihood of something other than this plan being realized is a far, far-off, distant, highly-remote possibility, and that the communities are very tired of the site being what it is, and would like to see it significantly improved, which this development plan absolutely promises as a significant, significant improvement, and that should not be downplayed in any way. That the conditions at the site presently are deplorable and offer nothing to the community, and the plan at hand offers significant, significant improvements. And there has been a strong, good-faith effort at, at meeting communities' interests and concerns for the site in a lot of different ways. And, and it's also the case that the public safety building is not being relocated here because of student housing. Otherwise, Morgan would not be making the investment to put its public safety building there for student housing that's not going to exist there. It's being relocated there because Morgan needs the space on its campus where the public safety office currently exists to do other things, and that this offers a better facility for their public safety office than what exists currently, which is the same reason why the Barnes &amp; Noble is coming to the site, because it's a better bookstore facility than what exists on the Morgan campus, and Morgan would like to free up that space on the campus to do other things with it. So there are, there are good, sound reasons why these buildings are going there on this site, and happen to be positioned immediately on the cusp of, cusp of the, the developer-owned site and the Morgan-owned site there. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
And as a, as a, as alum...
I'm sorry.
As alum, my sister and I both went to Morgan State University and graduates of the university, so thank you for breaking that down.
You're welcome.
Come on, Caroline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin, on behalf of the applicant. I'd just like to clarify a couple of things that were addressed. I won't take too much of your time. I know we've been here for a little while this afternoon already. Prelimarily, all that this bill does is repeal the PUD. It does not cancel the development plan. It doesn't mean that nothing's going to happen on the site. The developer fully intends to move forward with a development plan for the project that does include a grocery store. It's all going to be Phase 1. There isn't going to be a second phase. There isn't going to, this isn't going to be done in multiple, like over, over, you know, multi-phase process. We're going to have one big phase, the whole center at once. It's going to include a grocery store. We are very excited, and we hope to have news to share about that very shortly. We would love to have seen a housing component on this site. In fact, you know, one of the things that was mentioned a little while ago was that we had a groundbreaking almost a year ago, and nothing has happened since then. And part of that delay has been because we really wanted to take another run at getting a housing component here. And so we put the brakes on, and we tried to see if there was a way that we could make a housing component work, and we looked at it from a whole bunch of different angles, and it just, in the market today, as Councilman Dorsey said, it just wasn't going to be viable at this location. We want to proceed with a development plan to revitalize the shopping center, which, as you said, is not in very good condition right now. It will be much better for the communities. We have met extensively with the four community associations that are located in the vicinity of the site. We have a 30-page community benefits agreement that's recorded in the land records that dictates everything from what types of retail operations we can have to the types of signage and lighting and security. It has, it's probably the most extensive community benefits agreement that I have worked on, and it's signed by representatives, leaders of the four surrounding community associations who are all in support of the redevelopment of the site. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for your words earlier. You said a lot of what I was planning to say.
Just to make a note, when we talk about the infeasibility of student housing at the site, or housing, market-rate housing either, there's nuance to that. I mean, there was feasibility to add the five stories, I think, that were originally conceived of with the plans, but Senator, I was in the meeting. You know, I was in the meeting with, with Morgan's president, the CFO, and, and others, as well, and the developer, and community representatives, when Joan Carter Conway basically said, "Over my dead body, is there ever going to be any housing on this site, period? End of discussion." And that was a hard position between, to put the developer and Morgan, because Morgan really wanted the housing there. And that was, that was a strange change of, of events there, because Joan Carter Conway has historically been a very, very strong advocate with Morgan State University, and, and she took a hard line in favor of the community's opposition to there being student housing there, much to Morgan and the developers' dismay. And from that hard, polarized position, later came some middle-ground acceptance that instead of there being maybe five stories of student housing, there might be two or three stories, and that was acceptable to the community, and it was a matter about the heights of the building. Where the infeasibility of the financing came along was in the inability to finance a significantly reduced number of units. There is economic viability in increased density and increased numbers of units, and the developer could not figure out how to finance a reduced number of units without significant state support from, say, Medco to help support Morgan State having student housing there. And the Morgan Board made a decision that it was not going to put itself in, in the middle of this, and the Morgan Board was not going to cosign for Medco to help finance student housing on the site. And market-rate housing would cost just as much and need more, even more independent financing to it, and so that was equally infeasible. So it was the constraints that were placed on this by the community that are prohibitive of it having any housing on it, which I absolutely agree would attract higher-quality retail and give the owner and the community more diversity of shops and offerings than it could offer without that increased density, which I think is unfortunate. But at this point, as I said, it could be, you know, I'm not willing to, to support the idea that we just let the site languish for another decade in its current condition when the community says enough is enough, we want something to move forward, and we're okay with this plan.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved. Oh, excuse me, second.
Clark moved it, Dorsey's second, I guess.
No.
Who was it?
He's moved it, I'm second.
Oh. Dorsey. Second, Clark.
Chairman Reisinger?
Yes.
Shannon Snead, yes. Mary Pat Clark?
Yes.
Erica Stella?
Yes.
Brian Dorsey?
Yes.
Leon Pickett?
Yes.
Robert Stoops is absent as well. That's it. It moves to second. It moves on to second reader. This committee will present this bill to full council for a second reading on October 28th, 2019. Thank you, everybody.